Okay, go ahead. What do you meant by framework or why we required a framework at all? Because every time in any interviews or anywhere we talk about automation framework, this framework, that framework, but what is the purpose of a framework actually? Why we require a framework? Or what do you meant by a framework? Yes, you can answer. So I, right or wrong, it doesn't matter. You can participate in the discussion, please.
It's a platform for developing software application.
Platform for development of his application. Yes, next. Any other pointers?
Set up protocols.
Set of protocols. Okay, next.
It gives a structure. Kind of like a flow.
Excellent. It gives a structure and it gives a flow.
It makes work easy.
It make work easy. Good. Any other pointers? To you, what do you meant by a framework? So that is what means, because we have been here and there every day we heard about this term. Framework, framework, development framework, testing framework or the automation frameworks, we will very frequently discuss, even we have been discussed about unit testing framework and testing framework as a testing G. So we are discussing all these things, right? What exactly you meant by this frameworks? See. Yeah, go ahead, please.
I know if you have a framework, then you can execute your project in a systematic way.
Excellent, excellent. So you mean to say that if I have the framework help to do the execution in a systematic way. Okay?
Yeah, it's like a, because you're building a structure and then you do it in an articulate way, like how you have pointers, you'll do like first step is the second step.
Yes, yes, good. Okay, so now let me put it in this way. I think I have been given this particular example. When I used to tell about the S D L C's, I used to talk about this example. So when you wanted to construct a house, so how you will construct this particular house? So those things we will be discussing, right? Now, the similar way, I'll just try to map it to that one. For an example, now I wanted to construct a particular house. Now for constructing in a house, so how directly we will go and then keep the bricks and then we'll construct? Probably not. So first we will make a blueprint. The architect will come into the picture. So the civil engineer, the civil engineer will design the architecture. So it's based upon the requirements. So he will say that I need to have my master bedroom and I need to have my child bedrooms and I need to have my car parking and I need to have my open garden on the terrace and I need to have my pool on my terrace. So like this, we'll give you all the requirements to him so that based upon his, these requirements, he will start to create an architecture for us and then he will give it to us and then based upon that particular architecture, we can say that boss, I need to change this so that they can change that. And then based upon our own customizations, he will make that particular customizations and then he will do that. But if you see here, few things are mandatory. You can't remove means when you are creating a particular house design. So you need to have the bedroom or we need to have our restrooms and we need to have our kitchen and these things and the living room, these are the mandatory. You can design it in a different way, but still you will have that particular different categories of different categories of rooms will be there. So they might be designed in a different, different models, but these rooms are mandatory, right? Now, once you have this one, so you will enter into your hall and from your hall you can go to your kitchens or you can go to your bedroom or you can go to your garden or you can go to your gym or you can go to your pool. So now wherever you wanted, you can go in a systematic order. So now randomly, as soon as you entered into the house, you will not go into the bedroom, right? So the same way, it can be have a particular structure. So according to that particular structure, you can design yourself. Now, so how you have a blueprint means actually the same thing when I explaining about a class, I have been talked about this and then when I have been talked about the S T L C models, I talked about this. So now why I was relating the same example over here is even for the framework, it is, you can define it in your own base. There is, there are many definitions. If you typed in the Google, you can see what is a framework means you can have any number of definitions. But what you need to understand is framework will help us to give a structural flow where to execute a project efficiently and effectively. Simple. So now I wanted to execute my project, I need to have certain structure to execute this project efficiently and effectively. So that's the reason I required a framework. Now, let, let, understand this particular definition thoroughly. Now, when you wanted to do this, so for an example, now I'll try to, hope you guys are able to see the screen now, right?
Yes, Chris.
Okay, so now for an example, now I'll take the project for the execution. So now here, when it comes to the framework, frameworks are not only for the testing team or for the developments. You know, for the development, I need to create a project. There will be a development frameworks out there. Means for an example, M V C model, M V C pattern we do have all the unit testing framework means, the unit testing framework will help you to do the unit testing and then M V C to the development of this one. So everything will have a certain framework to do that. So now, when it comes to the automation, so for the automation also, we should have, we should be having this particular framework. Now, what are the basic components of a framework? We should have it. See now, what are the parts of a human being? Head, hands, legs, heart. So now, these are the components of a framework, right? So the same way, when you wanted to create it for an automation framework, so now what do you, that's why we required an automation framework to execute project effectively and efficiently boss, to, to have a smoother execution, to have an organized and the structural way of executions, I just wanted to do it. So now, if at all, there is a house, okay? So now this is an house and this is another house. This is a house A and this is house B. Now, in the house A, as soon as I entered into this, so I have my sofa set here and I have my TV set here and here I do have steps and here I have a neatly arranged a table lamp and then here I do have my dining table and then here I have a partitioned kitchen and I need to go for an upstairs and then the upstairs I do have my master bedroom and here my child bedroom and then I have one staircase and then have my pool and garden. So how is this? And here, this is kitchen, this is bedroom and this is the pool, this is dining hall, this is kitchen and here this is living room and the people enter here, the people go here, people go here. So now, which is, which one you will prefer usually? See, if, if someone entered into the house, which one means whether if something is structured and neatly arranged, will you like that or which is not arranged and which is very randomized and which is not so clean and good, so which you will allow to do it? So obviously, ninety, ninety-nine percentage of people will be preferring this. Except one or two percentage people love this one also, so I'll not comment on that. But majority of the people will love to have the things organized and then neat, clean, right? The same way, when we wanted to execute our projects, so even our projects also should be into a structured way. Right? So now how to make this particular structured things means, for an example, I wanted to give my inputs. All my, all my input, I need to pass my inputs is nothing but my tested data. I need to pass all my tested data, right? So all my tested data, I'll be keeping into one particular folder. So from this particular folder, all my tested data will come. And the second thing is all my output means all my output is nothing but my reports. All my reports will be generated over here. Means in this reports, I'll be having for the desktop reports and I'll be having it for mobile reports and I'll be having the web reports and I'll be having API reports, all these things I'll be organized and even I'll be having my videos, video recordings, all these things I'll keep it and even my screenshots. So if you click on the output folders, the reports, I'll be having a different section of this particular sections. Under these particular sections, once again I have the video screenshots and the H T M L reports. So that's where I will, I wanted to organize my outputs and this is where I'll keep my tested data. In the tested data, all my configs and all my test case tested data, so different files I'll be keeping during the organizing things. And the next one is, I wanted to keep all my test scripts. So how, with the test, okay, rather than the test scripts, I'll say in the test suit so that it will be easily understand. So I have my test suits. So in the test suits, I'll be having smoke suit and then regression. So what is the difference between a test case and a test suit? Guys, what is the difference between a test case and a suit?
Test.
So now, for a, I mean, a group of test cases will form a test suit and a group of test steps will form a test case. Okay, so now, this test cases will be classified from the test scenarios. Test scenarios will be classified into the test cases and a group of test steps will form to a test case and a group of test cases will form a test suit. Now, this is how the test suits are formed. So now under this particular test suits, we'll be having smoke and we will be having the regression. So now, however, so in this particular test suit, we will be having the test cases and all the test cases are maintained here. So this is all my test suits will be available here. Now in the test suits, how it would be classified is, I'll classify with all my web suits, all my API suits, all my desktop suits and is there any integration test suits are there? So all those integrations will be part of this particular test suits. So now you need to understand that I can make this segregation and under the web, I can have my product, product one, product two, product three, product four. Under the product, under the product one, I'll be having smoke suit regression suits, smoke suit regression suits. Under the API, so I'll be having the product one, product two, product three and for that one, I'll be having this more concentration. So this is how we will be classifying and then rearranging. So this is called test case, okay, not the enumeration, so that I'll talk about later. So here, we have been talked about the test suits. Now, the most important things is, I need to maintain my testing G X M L files, right? So I'll keep all my testing G X M L file because I'll be having to trigger my web test cases, I'll keep my testing G X M L and here I need to execute sequentially or parallelly and then I wanted to execute for my API, I wanted to execute for my mobile and I wanted to execute it for the desktop. So I'll have different set of my X M L files. Means these are the kickstarters, means to kickstart my executions, I'll be having this particular files. So now these files will be pointed to the respective class files and then it will be triggered me back. And all the related to the Maven files or the Maven pom dot file will be having, right, pom dot X M L file. So the pom dot X M L file will be there. So now from the pom dot X M L file, I'll trigger to the X M L. So from the X M L, it will jump into the respective test suits. Now for this one, I'll be having some common utility functions. So common utility functions and the common code library. So what are the utility functions and the common code library means? Utility functions, usually in our homes, we will be having the utilities. Means for example, we have vessels. So for an example, I wanted to bring some curries, gravies, I'll be keeping into the utilities. Right? So it helps us to arrange the things in a proper structure. So utility functions are like for an example, Excel utilities. So now I wanted to play with the poi dot X M L files. So all my Excel, you tells I'll be keeping into that one and I wanted to keep my mail sending, I need to send an email. So I'll keep all these emails into that. So this is what my Excel and this is for my X M L and this is for my JSON and so all the function, generic functions. So these utility functions are not specific to any project. So anywhere, whenever you use Excel, you can call these functions. You'll be creating an object for this Excel and then you'll be using it and for X M L. If you wanted to use X M L or if you wanted to use for the JSON or if you wanted to use for the MySQL or if you wanted to use it for any particular functionality. So now if you see over here, so for all these particular functionalities, so we, we will be means this is a common generic code which can be used across the project and projects. So that's where all these utility functions means for example, date creation function. So always by default, it will create a date in whatever the format you wanted it. So like this, we will be creating the utility functions, util functions, which it can be helpful in our execution of the project. And common code library. So the common code library name itself, it was saying that it's a common code. Means this particular common code can be used in any many places. Example, I'll create a login functionality and log out functionality. So now in many of your test cases, this login and then log out is common, right? You will be logging into this one and then you would be logging out into this one. So that you'll be doing it, right? So that is what the common thing. So guys, just give me one second. So yeah, so now if you see here, now for many test cases, we need to use the login and the log out. So at that time, we'll create the common functionality. So this is called business common functionalities. So when we have written these particular business common functionalities, this can be used specific for the project and these are the common methods where you can use it into the test case. For an example, for writing login functions, I have ten lines of code. Now all these ten lines of code in each test case, means I have ten test cases in each test case, I need to do the login and the log out. So now why I need to write ten lines of code here? So instead of that one, I'll create some basic functions or the basic components or basic building blocks. So that particular building blocks, I can call here and then I'll try to execute this. So now this is called the common code library and this one. So calling this one means we do have different type of frameworks as part of our journey. I'll explain about that. In the meantime, try to understand that's a component, we will, wherever we wanted to have a block of code which we can reuse in our test cases, so that we will be keeping it. So those are the things it will be calling as a common code library. So now if you see here, I had my inputs, I had my outputs, I had my test cases and I had my common code libraries and the utilities and the next most important thing is the recovery scenarios or rather than if I say the recovery scenarios, you might get confused, it would be like an exception handling. So the most important thing for any particular framework, we will be using this particular exception handlings. So how to handle if you have the exception? So for the framework, we will be doing this particular exceptional handling. And the most, another important component of the framework is the log generations. Now, for an example, the automation generate this particular log. So how this particular logs will be there for us? So we will be having the logs. So as, what are the, means what are the parts of a human body? So when you talk about this one, so how you will be saying this particular head, the hands, tails and all these things will be there, right? The same thing, so we will be having these as the components of the framework. And the most important thing, at last but not least, so which is the heart of the system. So how we will be having a human body heart? So we'll be having a driver script. The name itself, it was saying that driver. So now means for a complete bus, there is a driver, he drives the bus. And for a train, they will have a train driver and we have for a flight, we have a pilot. So now this is called the driver script where it drives. Means now if you see here, these are all different components. Now for all these particular components, someone need to integrate all these particular components to have the communication between those people, right? So the driver script will be the heart of the system where it can maintain the complete integrations between the systems. So first what we have been discussed, what is a framework? So framework is like a blueprint or it's a structural flow for any particular project to have an efficient and effective way of execution. So now what are the, we understand what is a framework and then why we required? So as we keep everything as an organized, so the execution would be so efficient or effective or else the maintenance of that particular project will go vain. So creating a framework is not a big deal, but the creating a framework which is easy for use and maintainability is easy and then anyone can easily understand that framework. If you have been created, then you are a good architect. If you're not able to design a framework with this, we can have many frameworks in the market, bringing the particular framework and dumping to us, it's not a big deal. So within the span of one, two, two hours, if like a engineer, okay, what do you meant by an engineer? Test engineer or an automation engineer. So why we will call an engineer? Means by seeing the code, if you are able to understand the structure, understand the things, then only you are an engineer. Or else you are not. We'll be calling it right, Mestri, Kulis, this, this, whatever the name you wanted to keep it, you can keep it. But if you are able to, means if you are, the real definition of an engineer means, none of the people will come and explain you the codes. If you are able to see the code and then you are able to translate into the things, then you are a real engineer. That's the definition of an engineer. Now you can take it as a development engineer or a test engineer. The test engineer means in terms of the automation engineer, I'm talking about it. So automation test engineer, so as soon as you see, see now, you know, see now, you know Java, you know Maven, you know test engine, all the things. Learning framework, it shouldn't be not more than one hour. Because you already know how test N G works, you already know Maven how it works. You already know what is, how Java works and how we will create an object and how we'll access the methods and classes from one class to another class and you know how the selenium works. Now why someone need to explain you the framework? Just the need to show you the flow, boss, from this file, it will jump to this file, from this file, it need to jump to this file. So this is what it will can explain. But sitting and explaining the framework for what? Don't you understand how test N G works? Don't you understand if you go to the pom dot X M L, what are the plugins we have been used? See, as soon as you get a particular framework. So first step number one, go to the pom dot X M L. So these are the tips. Now if you go to the pom dot X M L, you know what are the plugins they have been used. By this one, you can understand, oh, these all things are there, I know this all. Or if you don't know something, go and Google it. Now pom dot X M L is done. So from pom dot X M L, where the trigger is going, the control is going for the test N G X M L file. Okay, what are the test N G X M L files are there? Now, once you go to the test N G X M L files, now once after this one, so now what else we wanted to go? So I know the pom dot X M L, I know the test N G dot, I mean the X M L, from the test N G dot X M L, so from where it will going for this? So now here it will go for the runner files. Runner files are nothing but the driver files. The driver scripts are the runner files. Okay, so now from the runner files, it will means for which scripts it was trying to go. Test scripts it was going. Actually here, you don't, you, you, a few things are not there like cucumber. If you have the cucumber, then you understand what is the importance of a runner file. Because from the test N G directly, we are skipping these runner files and going to the test suits. But still, there are, means the frameworks, many frameworks we have been designed because it all depends upon the requirement to requirement. I told you right, I, I go to a shop and I wanted to buy, I wanted to stitch a lot for me, so I need to give him the requirement. If I ask him to stitch me a suit, so then he need to stitch me a suit. If I have asked him for, asking to stitch me for a silver commedia, so he was need to give for that. So now exactly what I, my requirement, according to my requirement, I need to get that done. The same way, the framework should be created based upon the requirement. It's not that I have this framework, please use this framework. Or I get this frameworks from someone else. See now the trends are, some people will be working with the multiple projects, some guy will have all the frameworks. Please share me this framework. I'll take that framework and I'll throw one framework to the project. No, that's a stupidity thing which we are trying to do it. You'll not understand what it was happening. Based upon your automation feasibility study, you need to start create the framework. Create from blocks, then only you can become a good architect. See, architect means they will not drop from the sky. And you believe it or not, when I was trying to learn this one, none of the people helped me in training these particular things. Because the people don't know the basics. If you know the basics, then you can easily understand and train others. We used to have thirty-two, forty applications. Now you, we are working for a single project, creating a framework for a single project, that's not a big deal. I'll show you in an application. I just, I'll not show the in detail because that's a very confidential application. This is one of the most critical applications which we have been done. Before eight years, I have been worked on this. I'll show just an example. So how that look like? Then you can understand the complexity of that particular application. See, and see is, okay?
We are not able to see.
I think, yeah, yeah, I'll stop that. I need to share this, share this, how to stop, stop sharing. Share this screen. Okay, you are able to see this one, right? I just wanted to show you. Okay, if you see here, these are the modules, means these are the applications. Means for an example, there is an particular, a particular application. For this particular applications, we will have thirty-two satellite applications. Satellite applications means that will be connected and then it will be sourcing the data, inputting the data to this core application. So this is what the core module. And from this particular core module, we will have sixteen downstream applications. So thirty-two upstream means from this particular upstream means we'll get the source of data from here and downstream will be having this particular, from the core module, it process the particular data and from once after the processing, it will give the data to the other applications. So downstream, we have the sixteen applications. From all the sixteen applications, it route to one application. This is what are the main application. So means if you know about the stock market, so this is the funding. This application is one of the top most application. For month, we used to pay three hundred lakh dollars at that time. And the, here only nine people will be sitting, the fund managers, fund managers will see only this particular application. For this, seven hundred and fifty people, we will book. With this, all application. Now the challenge is we need to automate this all. Now, these applications will be having some very old legacy applications. Means when it has been started, the development, at that time, those applications, we do have web applications, client server applications, desktop applications and all category of applications will be having it. So now with a single, the, the single platform, we need to develop enough framework to construct the framework for all these sort of applications. And then once we have been done, read that and then do this. So on this particular thing, we need to do the API testing, we need to do the UI testing, we need to do the mobile testing, we need to do the E T L testing, we need to do the performance testing and then we need to do the security testing. This is what my scope. If you see here, so for creating this thing, we spent some days to first to list down what are the application. So now you seen it, right? This is the only the core modules which I talked about in the main application. And these are the satellite applications. I told you right, the upstream, downstream applications. And it's support for thirteen jurisdictions, thirteen jurisdictions means thirteen countries. I think if you see it in the starting of the page itself, you can see what are the jurisdictions it will be supporting it. In Singapore, for an example, in India, it will have for B S E, N S E. So now these are the jurisdictions, these are the countries and into this particular countries, whatever the trading systems are there for that particular trading systems, we need to do it. And then if you see here, almost all, means you know, these people, whoever there, all are double PhDs. Means they have done double PhD in the, the economy, in the economy of the respective countries. So this is from Japan and then this is here, she is from Europe. So why I'm showing these particular things? It's not about the showing things for you, but why I'm showing this one is, you see the requirement, the upstream and downstream applications like this. Creating a framework for one particular project, it was not a big deal. But when you wanted to create it for the multiple applications, multiple technique, multiple technologies and all those things. At that point of time, you'll not get any framework in the market. Why I'm saying this all point is because when you wanted to create a particular architecture, understand thoroughly. So how to start from the basics? And first you need to know what are the different categories of framework. So that's the follow-up of this particular session. So now what I told you, what do you meant by framework? Why we require the framework? What are the components of the framework? And everyone have the normal tendency that, oh, I can get the framework any from anywhere, I can directly copy, pay. If I go to the GitHub, I can see any number of frameworks. If you go here and then if you type selenium, Java, framework and Git, if you type this, that's enough. Again, if you click on this one, you can see how many frameworks are there. This is by default, those guys has been given it. If you see on the selenium HQ, how many, these are all frameworks. See now with the dockers, Ansible, C, I R C, Fluent, all these things, you can have the frameworks. Just download the framework and using it. If you click, means if you understand the structure, understand the feasibility, understand the technology stack and from there you need to start creating stone by stone, then you can create a strong and concrete framework. If you download this one and then working for this one, that doesn't really matter for you. You will not become a good architect. See, engineers, a bunch of engineers will, means out of hundred engineers, only five to six architects will be developed. And out of the five architects, if you wanted to stay a unique and alone, so you should create your framework architectures by your own. See, once you crossed your five years, six years, the people will not ask you about, did you return the scripts or not? So they will ask you about your framework. So if you, means how your framework works, what is your contribution to your frameworks? Or how you have been created the framework architecture? So to create the framework architecture, so you know this, you need to know. So to create the framework architecture, so you know this, you need to know about this particular basics. What would be the basic components of a framework we should require? And what are the different type of frameworks available in the market? So now if you see in the previous diagram, so when I have been explained, uh so here you are seeing it, right? Now, we have been discussed about the different components of the frameworks. And every framework will come up with a different level of uh tech stack, different level of things. It all depends upon, based upon requirement. It's not that one framework designed, uh throw this one for everyone. So based upon requirements, a few frameworks required desktop and API, few frameworks has been required for only web. Few frameworks are required for all, means web, API, desktop, mobile, everything is required. So how to integrate those all things into a single pl- platform? So what are the set of tools we need to integrate with this one? So that is where, when you're creating a framework architecture, first you need to prepare the tech stack for this one. So for an example, now if you wanted to see how the tech stack will be defined, I was all showing you uh the samples. I'll be so, I'm just showing the samples. And uh this is not my intention to uh show the original things. So I just, if I shown you something, uh you can understand how this will be working. Okay, so now for an example, I'll, 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 I'll show you something. Okay, so some, some random things I was trying to show. So now if you see here, this is how this particular things will be there. Uh now, how we will be having it? So I'll just stop recording.